Good evening, I'd like to open up the regular session of the City of Crescent City's council meeting for Monday, November 19th. And please note that we are moving our closed session to the end of the meeting. So could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Ga- excuse me, Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Councilmember Westfall?
Here.
Mayor Protamania?
Here.
And Mayor Murray?
Here, thank you. And I'm asking Councilmember Westfall to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our members in the audience, including all of our explorers. It's great to see you guys again so soon all together. And welcome to those that are watching by the Internet and those who will be watching later on, on Channel 4. We will begin with election results with item number one, consider adoption of Resolution 2012-32 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, reciting the fact of the City of Crescent City election with the consolidated general election held on November 6, 2012, certifying the result and such other matters as provided by law. And we have a resolution to adopt.
I move for approval of Resolution Number 2012-32.
Second.
Could you please pull the roll, call the roll, Madam Clerk? Hold the vote. Yes ma'am. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. And at this time, I ask Councilmember Westfall to come out in the front of the audience. They're giving you this plaque as your recognition of being on the city council for four years.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll move on to administering the oath of office to our city clerk-elect, Robin Patch, and this will be done by the county clerk recorder, Alisa Northrup. I'm usually not nervous like this.
Are you ready? Raise your right hand. Do you, Robin Patch, affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which you are about to enter? To the best of your ability, so help you God.
I do. Thank you. Thank you. I know. I can't even believe it. Thank you very much, Alisa. And thank you all for being here, we appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Alisa. And now, in order to streamline this, we will install the new city council members all at once with us each reciting our own names. And that will be done by our newly sworn in city clerk, Robin Patch.
that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do, I do.
Alright, so swear.
Very good.
Congratulations.
And to you, congratulations.
Mr. Gastineau, our new city council member, take his seat.
I just wanted to recognize Donna this evening for being through, sitting through four years with us on this council, helping us make difficult decisions. And I know, no matter what you believe or how you feel, it's not easy to sit up here and do what we do every week, so, thank you.
And now we'll take a short recess so you can congratulate the people that you are here to send off with good wishes, and we'll reconvene in five minutes, so quarter after six. Congratulations. Mr. Gastineau, our new city council member, take his seat. And now we'll take a short recess so you can congratulate the people that you are here to send off with good wishes, and we'll reconvene in five minutes, so quarter after six. Victoria Dickey, I live in the county, so I can't vote for you, can't vote against you, just make noise. My comments are addressed to Donna. Donna, I want to thank you for serving for the last four years. The council, not the audience.
Alright. Former council, Donna, I want to thank you for serving for the last four years. I know it's been hard, but you've always addressed the members of the public with respect and courtesy. I will miss seeing you there. I hope to see you there too, but I'll miss seeing Donna. I miss knowing that I will come down and be treated with dignity. I hope that happens. Thank you, Donna, for working so hard on that fluoride issue. Now I don't have to drink or bathe in rat poison. I don't have to drill a well either. When no one else would listen, you did. I believe that if Donna had put her political career above her belief that all of us needed protection from fluoride, she would have been re-elected. She did not. She put the citizens first. Donna, thank you. You are a true friend to the citizens of Del Norte County. I don't have to walk out my time, do I?
No. Good. Other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move to item number nine, which is we will adjourn to the housing authority. And we have our director, Megan Miller, here. Could you please call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am. Board Member Hawley?
Here.
Board Member Shalong?
Present.
Board Member Gastineau?
Here.
Board, excuse me, Vice Chair Ania?
Here.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Here. Thank you.
And we have communications, is there any public comment on the housing authority? Same rules apply. Seeing none, I will close public comment for the housing authority and move on to the consent calendar. And is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close public comment for the consent calendar, bring it back to the board.
I'll move for the consent calendar numbers one and two. Second?
Could you please take the, hold the vote, Madam Clerk? Yes ma'am. Councilmember Gastineau?
Aye.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. We have no- Congratulations. Reports or presentations for, so we'll open this up for public comment, and any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the record, and after receiving recognition from myself, please state your name, and if you're a city or county resident for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Go ahead.
My name is Janice Wilson, I live in the county. Do not give up the fight for the life in America. We are teachers and not to listen on the side of mercy and compassion that's fought for. Donna Westfall, what she meant to me, the same God that I believe in is the same God her faith guides. For repentance for a helpless society, because the deceptive fluoridation HFSA is across this great nation as a acceptable, like the lies, deception, gossip, backbiting, that leads to more destruction. Before the silver cord snaps apart and the whole circulatory ceases to function, remember your Creator earnestly now. Now, the mustard seed does not become a tree to simply sit and shit on. It takes spirit and truth to interpret all things, and this makes the desire to search out the truth while it sits right-handed on a silver-winged prayer answered. While children understood facts from fiction, they, any, do not need your pity. They all need you to step up to the plate while you've been given the serious home run. Maybe you're feeling tired, fed up, we endured the pangs of a new day. Realize it's faith to believe in change for the better for all. In simplifying it, takes getting back to basics. Giving God the glory, Jesus Christ truly is the greater one in all of us. This is with truth that helps the interests of all. Pass straight and narrow, for a better today, better tomorrow. It's never too late for the health. Healthy families, healthy choices, workshop, metabolic syndrome, and obesity.
You have thirty seconds.
It's available. You do not have to be there to be headed there. The number is 707-464-8920. Ellen Fairbrothers, they have an excellent class to simplify what we ingest and indulge in every day. It helps to educate people so that they can live a better life physically, and which costs so much.
Your time's up, thank you. Other public comment?
Hello, Billy K. Gavin Tigert, Bid President, live in the county. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, we are doing the Christmas tree lighting parade and tree lighting on Saturday night. Lineup is at four o'clock in Beachfront Park. Helicopters landing four-thirty. Santa's coming back on the helicopter, and it is a professional Santa this year, so we're very excited. Parade starts at five, and it will be the normal parade route coming from Beachfront Park up H-Third-J-Front. Thank you.
Since there are children watching, we are very happy to know that Santa Claus is coming to town.
Yes. Oh, yes. Thank you.
Hi, Eileen Cooper, Del Norte County. I'd like to give a big thank you to Donna Westfall. She campaigned for getting fluoride out of our water more than she did for herself, and she has made some lasting positive change in this community that means a lot to the majority of people. So, I give a big thank you, and you show that you have what it takes as far as organizing and motivating people and reaching out to everyday citizens, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Morrison, I'm from the county too, and I want to thank Donna. She did a wonderful job, and she got the job done. She didn't have to ask anybody their opinion, she was able to think it through. She was able to research it, she didn't need any doctor's advice, no dentist's advice, she could think. Thank you. I hope you guys can continue doing it. I know that some of you campaigned because you agree. You don't want to argue, you just want to agree. I don't know how that's going to work insofar as getting everything done. There's 1.3 people dying each week here of cancer. Jim Barnes now owes 170, no, he doesn't, he has plenty of money from his grants and whatever, but there's $177,000 that, and fines from the toxic water people on the harbor, from the oil water treatment plant, the effluent. It's been going on since 2002. You just got the budget together in 2007, I guess it was, when Mr. McDonald came on, and Donna was chastised for asking questions. So, I think we're poor now, right? We don't have very much access and money, even though there's been grant after grant after grant, but I haven't seen one job created since I've been here. Good luck.
Other public comment?
Victoria Dickey, I live in the county, so I can't vote for you, can't vote against you, just make noise. My comments are addressed to Donna. Donna, I want to thank you for serving for the last four years.
The council, not the audience.
Alright. Former council, Donna, I want to thank you for serving for the last four years. I know it's been hard, but you've always addressed the members of the public with respect and courtesy. I will miss seeing you there. I hope to see you there too, but I'll miss seeing Donna. I miss knowing that I will come down and be treated with dignity. I hope that happens. Thank you, Donna, for working so hard on that fluoride issue. Now I don't have to drink or bathe in rat poison. I don't have to drill a well either. When no one else would listen, you did. I believe that if Donna had put her political career above her belief that all of us needed protection from fluoride, she would have been re-elected. She did not. She put the citizens first. Donna, thank you. You are a true friend to the citizens of Del Norte County. I don't have to walk out my time, do I?
No. Good. Other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move to item number nine, which is we will adjourn to the housing authority. And we have our director, Megan Miller, here. Could you please call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am. Board Member Hawley?
Here.
Board Member Shalong?
Present.
Board Member Gastineau?
Here.
Board, excuse me, Vice Chair Ania?
Here.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Here. Thank you.
And we have communications, is there any public comment on the housing authority? Same rules apply. Seeing none, I will close public comment for the housing authority and move on to the consent calendar. And is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close public comment for the consent calendar, bring it back to the board.
I'll move for the consent calendar numbers one and two. Second?
Could you please take the vote? Yes ma'am. Board Member Gastineau?
I think I'm going to abstain.
Board Member Shalong?
Yes.
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ania?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Yes, thank you. And we have no further business with the housing authority, but thank you for being here, Megan. It's always great to see you.
I do have some-
Oh, okay.
-comments, questions. I guess we're not on here. Normally there's a place for us to comment as directors, so I'm-
If you want to say something.
I'm going to. I had a couple of questions for you. If there is an apartment, well, I'm just, the apartment building's behind Walmart. They're not in the city, but they are on HUD?
Yes.
Okay. So, who inspects them?
Our housing inspector, Kevin Patrick.
I don't know what the process is, but I've seen pictures of the insides of the apartments, and they are god-awful. They are full of so much black mold that it is so unsafe and so unhealthy for the people living there. Leslie McNamara's previous supervisor, Leslie McNamara, has made a complaint, I believe, to the environmental, maybe, health inspector, health officer, and she received no response from him. I, that's just unacceptable.
Actually, I do know something about that. There was one building, and I don't know exactly which one it was, but it's one of the ones at Summer Park that just went up. And we had people lined up to go into those units, and there was something in that particular building with the condensation when they, when the builders, I don't know exactly what happened, but we had two or three people that we relocated to other units until we made sure that those repairs were made in the units that we were assisting.
Do you know when that was?
I believe they were people that were, I think, they were lined up for either September or October, and they were relocated at the end of September, so they must have been people that were lined up for October 1st. And they brought the problems to our attention, and we relocated, well, the complex relocated them to other units. And once the repairs were completed, I think the tenants had a choice whether they wanted to return to the original unit or stay in the one that they'd been relocated to.
Well, I know that one particular tenant, that I've seen the pictures of the inside of her apartment building just in the past few weeks, where it's completely full of black mold, and she has a baby. She has tried to work with them for months and months and months. It's gotten so bad that they've even paid her rent because of her complaints. But whatever the situation is, it needs to be taken care of. People absolutely cannot live in that kind of an environment, so-
No, I agree.
I'm making a formal complaint.
Madam Mayor, we can jump in. What the tenant should do is contact the county code enforcement officer and the county building inspector, and make that formal complaint so they can go to that apartment-
We don't have very much access and money, even though there's been grant after grant after grant. But I haven't seen one job created since I've been here. Good luck.
Other public comment?
Victoria Dickey, I live in the county, so I can't vote for you, can't vote against you, just make noise. My comments are addressed to Donna. Donna, I want to thank you for serving for the last four years.
The council, not the audience.
All right. Former council, Donna. I want to thank you for serving for the last four years. I know it's been hard, but you've always addressed the members of the public with respect and courtesy. I will miss seeing you there. I hope to see you there too, but I'll miss seeing Donna. I miss knowing that I will come down and be treated with dignity. I hope that happens. Thank you, Donna, for working so hard on that fluoride issue. Now I don't have to drink or bathe in rat poison. I don't have to drill a well either. When no one else would listen, you did. I believe that if Donna had put her political career above her belief that all of us needed protection from fluoride, she would have been reelected. She did not. She put the citizens first. Donna, thank you. You are a true friend to the citizens of Del Norte County. I don't have to walk out my time, do I?
No.
Good.
Other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we will move to item number nine, which is we will adjourn to the Housing Authority. And we have our director, Megan Miller, here. Could you please call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Board member Holly?
Here.
Board member Shalung?
Present.
Board member Gastineau?
Here.
Board, excuse me, vice chair Ania?
Here.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Here.
Thank you. And we have communications. Is there any public comment on the Housing Authority? Same rules apply. Seeing none, I will close public comment for the Housing Authority and move on to the consent calendar. And is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close public comment for the consent calendar. Bring it back to the board.
I'll move for the consent calendar numbers one and two. Second?
Could you please take the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Board member Gastineau?
I think I'm going to abstain.
Board member Shalung?
Yes.
Board member Holly?
Yes.
Vice chair Ania?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Yes, thank you. And we have no further business with the Housing Authority, but thank you for being here, Megan.
I do have some--
Oh, okay.
--comments, questions. I guess we're not on here. Normally, there's a place for us to comment as directors, so I'm--
If you want to say something.
I'm going to. I had a couple of questions for you. If there is an apartment, well, I'm just, the apartment building is behind Walmart. They're not in the city, but they are on HUD?
Yes.
Okay. So who inspects them?
Our housing inspector, Kevin Patrick.
I don't know what the process is, but I've seen pictures of the insides of the apartments, and they are god awful. They are full of so much black mold that it is so unsafe and so unhealthy for the people living there. Leslie McNamara's previous supervisor, Leslie McNamara, has made a complaint, I believe, to the environmental, maybe health inspector, health officer. And she received no response from him. I, that's just unacceptable.
Actually, I do know something about that. There was one building, and I don't know exactly which one it was, but it's one of the ones at Summer Park that just went up. And we had people lined up to go into those units. And there was something in that particular building with the condensation when they, when the builders, I don't know exactly what happened, but we had two or three people that we relocated to other units until we made sure that those repairs were made in the units that we were assisting.
Do you know when that was?
I believe they were people that were, I think they were lined up for either September or October, and they were relocated at the end of September. So they must have been people that were lined up for October 1st. And they brought the problems to our attention. And we relocated, well, the complex relocated them to other units. And once the repairs were completed, I think the tenants had a choice whether they wanted to return to the original unit or stay in the one that they'd been relocated to.
Well, I know that one particular tenant, that I've seen the pictures of the inside of her apartment building just in the past few weeks, where it's completely full of black mold, and she has a baby. She has tried to work with them for months and months and months. It's gotten so bad that they've even paid her rent because of her complaints. But whatever the situation is, it needs to be taken care of. People absolutely cannot live in that kind of an environment, so--
No, I agree.
I'm making a formal complaint.
Madam Mayor, may I jump in? What the tenant should do is contact the county code enforcement officer and the county building inspector and make that formal complaint, so they can go to that apartment complex and gain access and take a look at the conditions that are there.
And this isn't the first thing that I've heard. I mean, we've already, the city's already been out there and talked to this particular tenant because of other issues in the apartment. And the way she had to have, like, her, the, something in the venting, you know, that was coming into the air in the apartment was unhealthy. I mean, there's just so many issues and it needs to be handled.
They need to get with the county code enforcement officer and county building inspector and have them go out and inspect and take a look at the property. And I want to clarify, for our programs and, you know, what we do through the HUD programs, you know, each of the units, and Megan can expand on this a little bit, are inspected on an annual basis by our inspector. And they have to go through a checklist process, so the people that participate in our programs do get that annual inspection. And the housing, you know, that, you know, they won't get the funding unless their housing meets certain standards and it's habitable. So, you know, our program, basically, we're looking at constantly. We don't have access to other units that are not part of our program, especially if they're in the county. So, yeah, at this point, get with the county inspector and county code enforcement officer so that they can, you know, go in and document and get access.
Okay. And just for clarification, it sounds like not all of the units are subsidized by HUD?
No.
Okay. So some of them are not. So that would not allow us, as the Housing Authority, to go and inspect those that are not?
Right. We have no authority over the people who are not assisted.
Exactly. It would be the county.
I'm pretty sure this particular one is a HUD client, so.
If she is, please tell her to call me. We obviously would not have approved any kind of unit that had mold that was any kind of threat to--
Well, I think they've just relocated her, but she said that you can tell in the new apartment where mold has been painted over. I mean, you know, it's just--
Yeah, she is a client. Get with Megan, that way our inspector can go out there and we can, you know, help with that process.
Okay, great. Yeah, absolutely. You're welcome.
And you can tell them also, just to expand a little bit on what Jean said, we do annual inspections, but the tenant and the owner both have the ability to contact the Housing Authority anytime to request a special inspection. And we will be out there usually that same day to do it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That's good information. Thank you, Megan. Okay, any other comments or from other board members? With that, I will close the Housing Authority's meeting for tonight and move on to item number 10, which is adjourn to the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. And we have Mr. Palazzo, and we have a report by our deputy city attorney, Martha Rice. Mr. Palazzo?
No. No. Not for redevelopment.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong--
Yeah.
Sorry. I skipped to number 11. Okay, any public comments? Apologize for that. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent calendar, which is approval of the regular minutes of October 15th and approve the warrant claims of October 16th through today, November 19th, 2012. Oh, I missed that part too. Could you please take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Board member Gastineau?
I'm going to abstain again.
Oh, this is calling the roll.
Oh, it's roll, okay, I'm here.
If you want to abstain from roll, call this one.
I do, I do. I'm the new guy. Give me a break.
He's helping me out.
Board member Shalung?
Here.
Board member Holly?
Here.
Mayor, excuse me, vice chair Ania?
Here.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Here, thank you.
Okay, well--
We're not the unity-- We're the silly council.
The consent calendar--
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar items number one and two.
Second. Could you please take the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Board member Holly?
Yes.
Board member Shalung?
Yes.
Board member Gastineau?
Abstain.
Vice chair Ania?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray?
Yes, thank you. And we have no further business. Is there any comment from board members on this agenda item?
Just looking for an update from the last successor agency meeting.
Yeah. The successor agency, actually, two meetings ago, approved a resolution on the findings for our housing funds. You know, our auditor, he went through and kind of did the audit for the housing funds. The successor oversight board, excuse me, adopted that resolution. And basically, that resolution states that the remaining cash assets, the dollars that are left in the housing fund will be transferred to the county auditor controller for distribution to the taxing entities in December. That amount is $972,000. At that same meeting, we, you know, talked to the board about, you know, possibility of winding down the agency a little sooner by using those funds to pay off, you know, the water loan debt. The board, actually, Mr. Finnegan said, "Yeah, let's take a look at the numbers. Why don't you bring that back?" So this last meeting, we brought that information back to the oversight board, and they reviewed the numbers. And, you know, the conclusion, well, the presentation by staff was, if we use the dollars to pay down the water loan, we could probably close up the agency within about a year. However, if we did that and the agency did not exist, it would mean a cost to the school district of about $80,000 to $120,000. So the board, you know, ended up not taking any action in order to preserve, you know, that pass-through funding that the state gives the schools. So what that means is the money will go back to the taxing entities. The agency will continue probably for the next 20 to 30 years or the life of the agency in order to pay off one, the water loan. And the future tax increment will get passed through to the other, you know, taxing entities as we move forward. So that was--
So my question is, can't we do both? Couldn't we give the 120 to the school district and use the balance to pay off the water loan?
Well, it's, and, you know, I'm trying to figure out the best way to explain it, but it's the, Mr. Jan, I was in the audience? Not here.
He sits on our oversight.
Yeah, it's the pass-through. Do you have an easy way to explain that on how the county--
It's annual.
It's an annual fee.
So we're looking at 20, the 20 years that it'll take to pay back the water fund is 20 years that the school district will get an extra $80,000 to $100,000.
Right. And it's a pass-through by the state. So, you know, as long as the agency exists and we're making, you know, water fund payments, the state will pass through to the schools, you know, what, you know, their, I want to say loss, but what they're not realizing through, you know, the redevelopment. So it's a benefit to the school district.
It would be good for the city, but it wouldn't be good for the school district.
It would be good for the city, it would be good for a couple of other agencies, but not the school district.
Right. So the board--
I want to say this was kind of a hidden factor. I don't think the school district was too eager to advertise this until it, push came to shove, and it was about to go away. And then they, they kind of popped up and said, "Hey, you know, if you pay this off right now and terminate the redevelopment agency, or terminate the redevelopment residual, let's say, then we're going to lose this annual revenue. So please don't do that." And there was not much appetite on the oversight board to deprive the school district of that amount of money, especially because the city, what the city loses in the process is an ongoing bureaucratic hassle of maintaining this successor agency, this oversight board process for the next 20 years while all this is going on. And it's not fun and it's probably not economical or efficient, but it's not as devastating as losing this $80,000 to $100,000 to the school district, so.
And in order to cut down on the administrative overhead by the city, the board agreed last week to schedule quarterly meetings as opposed to monthly meetings, so we can cut down on some of that.
And we'll probably have to continue with some monthly meetings. You know, we need December's meeting to do the non-housing cash assets and funds and kind of close that out. But as we move into next year, we can probably go to the quarterly meetings.
We have that on, have that on the agenda for the December meeting--
Yes.
--to move to quarterly.
Mayor, I know that you and Mr. Palazzo, I don't know if any other council members attended the legislative update, but I guess my question to you is, is there any legislative relief or any lawsuits been filed that may or may not make a change in this process?
Yeah, I don't know of any legislative relief. There was a lawsuit, you know, that was filed by the league, and I don't know the status of that.
Several cities have filed it, along with the league, and it's just going through the courts. It's going to be a while. We haven't heard this past month.
Oh, I haven't heard any status on that one at all.
No, no. There's several cities that have joined in that.
But in terms of legislative relief, not this last conference call, but the one previous to that, the league advised that there's no political appetite to bring anything forward legislatively right now. We'll see what happens with newly electeds in the next year or so. But right now, there's no bills on the floor to, or even any background bills to make any changes on AB 1484. Thank you for the update. Welcome. Okay, with that, I will close the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and move on to item 11, which I had skipped over to. This is consider and waive full reading and introduce ordinance number 771 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, adding chapter 8.24 entitled Cost Recovery for Emergency Response Services to Title VIII Health and Safety of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Mayor Mayor, I'd ask Mr. Black to do the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep it brief, but the research toward this ordinance goes back really to 2009, when Martha Rice was asked by city manager Butler to do some research on some specific cost recovery ideas. She did that, and then the, she did an initial memo, and the ordinance itself kind of languished at that time and was revived under city manager Palazzo due to the need to address, as best as possible with the resources available to us, the budgetary gaps that we face. The ordinance itself, as you can tell, is kind of a, is kind of a framework ordinance. It's an umbrella kind of ordinance. According to Attorney Rice's research, each of the items that is listed under emergency response user fees is authorized by statute to become part of the city's cost recovery program. And each of those items is a policy matter for you to decide whether you want to go forward and establish cost recovery in that specific area or that specific line item and the amount thereof. But the amounts that are set forth, generally speaking, address the actual cost or the maximum cost, whichever is greater. So the, I should say, the estimated actual cost or the maximum cost, whichever is less. So with that, I think we're available to answer any questions. Chief Wakefield is here because a number of these items arise out of his activity with the fire department. And like I said, we're available to answer questions.
So are there any questions or clarifications by the council for Mr. Black?
Thank you. This looks like a very interesting proposal. I have some thoughts. And when we're dealing with things like 911 hangups, and we know kids sometimes play around with phones and that occurs, is that, is that something that would initiate some kind of a levy of a fine, for example, if kids get involved? I know that that occurs. Let me just tell you some of my concerns. One concern I have too is, I don't know if we initiate this fee schedule, if it will be a deterrent to report issues. I'm concerned that if there's a fender brender motor vehicle collision, they may not want to call law enforcement in to do an investigation necessarily and because of the cost. And that's something that can help, I think, when it comes to issues involving collisions and what comes out of that. It could, you know, it could escalate into an assault or something if we don't have law enforcement involvement. And also, who is it that gets charged the fee? If you have a collision and there's two cars, do they both get charged a $101 fee or just one?
It says the party at fault, but if there's no parties at fault, they both get billed.
The other thing that I was thinking about was, when I look at the school district, for example, and we have, you know, there's probably 1,200 employees at the school district, and when they change an alarm system, it takes a while to catch up in that environment as far as false alarms are concerned. And that could be problematic in a large organization. So that's, I just need to be cognizant of that as well. Just some quick thoughts on it. But I'm not, I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, and certainly we don't need to be running after false alarms and I know the cost of it. Oh, oh, there was one other question that I had. When we talk about replacing damaged equipment, if the equipment is, I don't know what a good example would be, if it's a ladder or something like that that's had 20 years of use and gets broken in the course of a fire, what is the cost of recovering that ladder? Is it the cost of a new ladder or some amortized cost of the ladder? That's just an example. I just think it's going to, it bears some additional discussion, because I think those are the kinds of things that will be appealed to the city manager ultimately.
Why don't, maybe I could just answer some of those questions. Under the notes, under the emergency response fees, the alarms and hangups are only counted if there's actually a department response. So, for example, a large organization that had multiple alarms at multiple sites could notify the department in advance, "We're going to be tinkering with our alarm system this weekend. Don't bother responding because we're going to be on all these different sites and there's probably, we're going to be testing and we may have some glitches." You know, there are some proactive things that could be done to keep police cars from rolling in that direction. Also, there's the indication that hangups will only be billed if there's actually a police response to the site. And I don't know how often there would not be a response, because if the 911 call identifies the location it's coming from, they may roll in that direction anyway, even if it's a hangup. But so those are a couple of things.
We also have an appeal process.
There's an appeal process. There's also, with respect to auto collisions, the way that vehicles are licensed these days, the incidence of uninsured people are much lower than they used to be. There are many fewer uninsured drivers on the road, and this is one of those bills like a towing expense or an ambulance cost that can be submitted to your insurance company. And it's our view that in most cases, if there's an at-fault driver, the insurance company's going to pay that.
Okay, so I had some of the same concerns. My first thought was criminal acts, you know, thinking of the Masonic Lodge where the fire, we were there for hours, I mean, all night long, and the fire ended up being the fault of a child. And then you're going to put this big bill on someone that's already suffered the loss of their entire structure. And so I started just thinking about those kinds of things. The other, I'll wait for Mr. Palazzo. The other thing is that, you know, the outcry from this community for the Cal Fire Assessment Fee of like $150 a year, and then you tell them that if we're going to go out and put the fire out at their house, their residence, we're going to charge them $420 if we're there up to three hours. gonna charge them 420 bucks if we're there up two, three hours. I, I just can't fathom our community being comfortable with that. So, I just, I think that a lot more, I know that the staff has put some thought into this, but I think there needs to be a lot more input from the community before we move forward with this, would be my opinion. But if you can change my mind.
Can you come up here, chief?
First of all, the Cal Fire thing, nobody that lives in the city of Crescent City is paying that. It's only in the state responsibility area, so any residents of the city aren't paying that, and any residents of the general populated area of the county aren't, like the Philkins Track or Washington Park are not paying that, so.
I was just using that as an example of people being pretty peeved.
Right.
At, you know, a fee being given to them.
And then the other thing is, and I think this was Bob's thought all along through this whole process, and ours as well, is that everybody, if you have homeowner's insurance, generally, your policy provides for payment to the fire department if they respond to your house. And I think our thought was that we were, we would bill the insurance company, maybe through the owner of the home, but if we get money from the insurance company, fine. I'm not sure that if somebody was working day and night to make ends meet, that we're gonna try and take money out of their pocket. But most insurance policies cover those kind of calls.
It was intended to bill the insurance companies.
Bill the insurance.
And, and we, again, have the appeal process.
Yes.
As backup.
Yes. And, you know, some of this, I think we even talked about, you know, a little judgment call as to the situation. You know, the five-year-old dials 911, okay, you know, we're gonna charge mom and dad. Not the first time, probably not the second time. Third or fourth time, maybe it's time for the parents to get involved, you know, or something, so.
So, the, the Masonic Lodge is actually a pretty good example, because most commercial policies of insurance provide for reimbursement up to $25,000, reimbursement of fire suppression costs, up to 25,000. I think we calculated, because we're a volunteer entity, of course, we didn't incur anything like that, but we, we calculated, it was about 3,500, 3,600, something in that range that we could have billed. And same thing with homeowner's insurance costs. There's many homeowner's insurance policies, I'm certainly not gonna say all, but they provide for up to $500 reimbursement of fire department response costs. So, throughout the state, we're, we pay through our insurance rates for that coverage. But if we don't have an ordinance in place, we're not allowed to bill that. But we're all paying, if we are buying insurance from State Farm, we're paying for other cities to collect that amount of money from State Farm around the state, but just not in our community. So, we're, you know, we're paying for it through insurance policies, but we're not collecting it. Others are. These are some, some thoughts. And we also, we also considered the fact that it's in the insurance company's interests to have a highly responsive, well-equipped, say, well-trained volunteer fire department in a community like ours, because if you get there five minutes sooner, or if you are 5% or 10% more effective in your response, you're saving the insurance company potentially major dollars. And so, to collect this fee a few times throughout the course of the year, it's not a huge impact on the city budget, but it does enable the city to do a little bit more and do a little bit better in terms of emergency response.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council members?
I'd just like to say that, that I agree with this, and throughout my career, I'll talk about burglar alarms and things like that, or people setting off alarms. You know, the police respond, usually it's two units, sometimes it's three, and we're in a hurry to catch a burglar. But if we get a phone call saying that, for example, a school, the principal is there, and they, they accidentally set it off, well, then we're not in a big hurry to get there. We may go there, just to make sure the principal is there, but we never charge for that in the cities I've worked in. I mean, they called ahead of time, said it was an error, and it was just our policy to follow through and make sure it was the principal. And we never charged for a false alarm, because they called us before we arrived. And I'm sure that's what would happen in, in these, these cases. And I agree with you on the motor vehicles, that's what you have insurance for. And the same thing for, for fires, on fire calls there. I pay, I pay a lot of money for my homeowner's insurance, and part of that is fire. And other cities are collecting this, and I'm paying for that. And I, and I, I think this is a good thing. I don't think it's gonna be used that much. I think it's gonna be used when it needs to be used.
Anything else from council members?
I, I just wanna say, I just don't want to see any hesitancy in someone calling in a fire. If they're thinking in the back of their minds, "This is gonna cost me $500, I'm gonna try and put it out myself." You need the professionals there, and you need them there quickly. So, I, it just, I, I just don't want this to be deterrent to people reporting.
Yeah, that was one point that I think is a good point that you made, that I didn't even consider. So, I would, I think I'd just like to hear from the residents that'll have to pay it, and the business owners as well, or school districts, before I can make up my mind.
Well, that's why we're doing, what we're doing tonight, is to vet the ordinance and, and get public, get the public aware of what we're intending, and get some public input at our next meetings, and.
So, Mayor, can I just ask, right now, when we have five, or six, or seven, or 10 false alarms, are we just responding to those, and that's just a part of doing business? It goes on? Okay. Well, that's not right either, I admit that.
Chief Packle present us with some law enforcement issues?
If someone calls up and says that it's a false alarm, even when we start rolling towards a scene, we shut it down, and they wouldn't be charged for that. We want to hold the people accountable for people that abuse us responding out to potential false alarms. Last year, as of today, we had 224 false alarms that the police department rolled to. 16 businesses in the city are the main culprits of these 224 alarms. Every time that an officer puts on his overhead lights and siren, it places everybody in jeopardy. So, that needs to be, that needs to be cut down as much as we possibly can. And I think that the false alarm here is for the people that don't care whether or not the alarm goes off, or don't want to place the phone call and wait for us to show up and then tell us that it's a false alarm. That, that doesn't suffice. So, it's a, these, every time that these calls go into the dispatch center, we roll on them. And 224, it adds up. And so, this is certainly gonna get the attention of the 16 biggest violators of this. And as far as Mr. Holly, as far as the 911 hangups, you're absolutely right. Kids do play on the phone. That's why warnings are given first, to make the, the parents more accountable and say, "Look, your child's playing around the phone. Put the phone up to a certain location where they can't reach it," or teach them not to hit the 911. It's not a question of the city making money or anything. This is for the safety and the protection of the community itself.
So, if you say there's 16 businesses.
Uh huh.
In, just in the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that.
All of them are in the city limits.
Are mostly the 224. Have you done any outreach with them? Any education, any?
You mean, every single time we respond and tell them that the alarm's going off, please correct those? We don't go anymore as far as education is concerned, no. They know.
Okay, but tell me, tell me more about that. What does that mean? What does that mean to you, that they know?
Well, I, I just want to interject that the alarm service companies charge these businesses is for having false alarms, when they don't let them know that it was set off accidentally or whatever. So, they're, they're charging those customers.
I don't, my.
And the first phone call goes to the resident or the contact person to.
So, could you answer my question?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thanks. I would like to know what that means to you, that the business knows that they have a problem and they're not addressing it? What, what's the cause of that?
Well, it's either a, a, not a experienced person at the business that sets it off, they have not explained to them where the, the panic alarm is, or how the alarm goes off, or, or know the code, how to stop it. Those things are discussed at the time that the alarm does go off.
I'm just wondering if there's some education that can be done. I know when I worked at the radio station, I was on the call list for the alarm, because I was just down the street.
Right.
Can't tell you how many times I had to get up in the middle of the night and go down there for a false alarm, just because something, you know, it was no fault of anything. Just something set the alarm off.
And so, after the first time, that's why we give warnings, and we're still trying to direct on how many warnings are to be given initially, so that they can correct that issue, whether it's a business, or such a radio station, or whatever you have.
You know, chief, one of the things we did in the last city I worked, if we responded to a false alarm one time, and there's a warning, if we went a second time, if they called their alarm company, and the alarm company called the police department and said, "We went out and physically checked it, and we didn't find anything," or "We found something," we went back to the first, we took the calls off the map. It's because the alarm company physically came out there.
Right.
And that might be a good idea.
It's their responsibility to make sure that the system is working, because they're paying for the system.
If there's false alarms going off, the system is not working properly.
Right.
And it's up to the alarm company to come out.
Right. Okay, does that, okay?
And the reason I mentioned that the alarm services companies, they charge the business, is that I, the places I've worked where we have alarms that we need to work with, we were beat over the head to make sure that you didn't, if you set it off, this is what you do in order to prevent the alarm company and the law enforcement from arriving with, because it's unnecessary.
And a lot of times, if the, if the system, there's a problem with the system, they shut it down, so that there's not any possibility of another false alarm going out as well, so.
Thank you.
You know, before we leave this, Mayor, I'd like to say that I did have a, a city resident approach me today on this, and said that they thought that this was a good idea, except that the money recovered, they felt should go back to a fund for either the police or fire, or whoever the response agency was, and not into the city general fund. I'm just throwing out what one citizen's idea was.
Well, all of the fire and police is paid by the general fund.
We can keep track, yeah, I know that. We can, we can keep track of how much the fund is, the budget.
Okay, with that, I will open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Come on, Beth. Seeing no public comment, this was introduce the ordinance and read by title only, and direct staff to notice public hearing for the next meeting. So, do we have consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, so we'll move on to the next item, and we just had Cheryl Corpstein, I just wanted to congratulate her. She was just, she just left, but we had on our consent calendar, and I should have read that out, to appoint a new advisory board member, and that was Cheryl Corpstein.
Kelly said, "Thank you."
That's a congratulations. I didn't hear, yeah, sorry. Okay.
Madam, Mary, I think what we need to do is do a formal introduction of the ordinance and, and take a vote on this.
Oh, and that's not how it read in the, so.
I'll move, I'll move to, to waive the full reading and introduce ordinance number 771, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 8.24 entitled "Cost Recovery for Emergency Response Services" to Title VIII Health and Safety of the Crescent City, of Crescent City Municipal Code.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call the, the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a discussion for just a second?
Sure.
Well, I think the ordinance is a good idea. I'm gonna need a little more time to study it, so we can go forward with the vote.
This is just an introduction of it. It's not the final vote, just to introduce it.
The way this is, it, it gets introduced, and it'll be published in the newspaper. I'm sure the triplicate will have an article on this for Saturday's paper, and then it'll go to a public hearing at your next council meeting, which is December 3rd.
3rd.
You'll hold a public hearing, give the opportunity of the public to comment on the ordinance.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure of that, thanks.
And, and the vote again, that's the adoption?
Yeah, this, this is just a vote to introduce it and, and get it out to the public.
Anything else? Now, could you please hold the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Gastonow?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. Okay, with that, we will bring it back to our meeting in December, and move on to item number 12, which, which is receive an update on the City of Crescent City Code Enforcement Program and take action as necessary and appropriate. Would you like to introduce Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I would like to introduce Mr. Taylor. Prior to that, the council requested that staff come back with just code enforcement update on our activities and kind of our process. And so, Mr. Taylor is gonna walk you through a PowerPoint presentation, where we have quite a few slides on, you know, the code enforcement that we encounter throughout our community, and then we have some recommendations for the council at the end. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. So, again, I was asked to come give an update and presentation on the City Crescent City Code Enforcement Program, so I put together a PowerPoint presentation. Everybody's received the staff report, and I'll answer any questions as we go along. So, just kinda run through some stats here. And once again, the plane department took on the role of code enforcement around September 2010. Prior to that, we had a full-time planner, a full-time associate planner, and a full-time building inspector, who actually, half of their job was to do the code enforcement. So, all of this has actually been rolled into a single position now. Our code enforcement officer, myself, I am certified by California Association Code Enforcement Officers. Did that in 2010, when we took the program over. That consisted of going and taking about a 200-question exam and getting the certification. And again, currently, code enforcement is budgeted as a one-third time position, and that is for the entire city. Since the end of 2010, we've handled over 60 cases. Most of these, I throw the 60 number out there, these are a lot of cases that required some type of a follow-up. Again, some of these, some stuff can be handled fairly quickly, but you deal with some of these cases, and some of them last weeks, months, some of them can even go on for years.
Eric, can you define a case?
Well, Eric, everything could be considered a case, but some stuff, you know, give example for Mr. Deal's properties, and we dealt with that for over a year and a half. So, that's something that requires, you know, I guess I could skip ahead a little bit. Out of the process works, we'll receive a complaint, we'll follow up on that complaint, we'll verify or deny that there's even a complaint that exists. And then if a complaint exists, then, you know, we'll do a follow-up on that. Typically, a lot of times, for example, that's why I say I'm kind of loose with the 60 number, maybe graffiti on a building, sometimes if I'm familiar with the person, or we know, you know, we dealt with them, we might just give them a phone call, "Hey, can you please remove that?" And next day, it's gone. So, I throw out cases, it's something, or I had some type of follow-up, I don't get immediate response. Or we have to send letters out, some type of notification, you know, something that follows through, it requires a lot of follow-up, follow-through.
So, you know, cases, like the Deal property, we're all very aware of, so, and, you know, there aren't very many of them. So, when you say there's 60 cases, I start to wonder where they're all taking place at.
There are actually quite a few. They don't get to this level a lot of times. A lot of times, we can deal with it before that. We have administrative citation program that's, can be very successful. It just depends. You know, some of them, like I said, some can be weeks, some are months, some are years.
How many administrative citations have we written? Oh, here it is, 46.
So far, we have 46 administrative citations.
And that's this year?
This is through about the past two years. Well, we've only had the admin sites about two years.
Okay.
We've had admin sites.
Thanks.
And then again, you know, you throw in the MO letters, and this is, I don't, actually, we don't even track the letters anymore, because we can send so many out. 69 MO letters. We also do business license violations, so we'll send those out to businesses that are in violation.
For example, what are they in violation of?
It depends, could be something as much as not even paying your business license fees. So, actually, we've kind of taken that on, to also notify them, try to collect. It could be a variety of different things. It's, you know, can only capture so much in this presentation. I mean, code enforcement carries such a wide range, covers this huge range of possibilities. Again, so far this year, we've received about 70 complaints. Unfortunately, it becomes a manpower issue, you know, how much of this can we follow through on, and what can we follow up on? Unfortunately, it becomes a manpower issue, you know, how much of this can we follow through on, what can we follow up on? Just kind of give the, the, the importance of code enforcement and I kind of put it under social and economic impacts. I don't know, areas with vacant and abandoned properties, for example, can experience increased criminal activities, it's, again, the broken window theory, everybody's familiar with that. So you have a house has a broken window and it's left, uh, unattended. You know, next maybe you get a door kicked in or some graffiti and it just goes on and on if it, if it's left unchecked. Uh, there's been some studies that are documented in your report. For example, at properties within a hundred and fifty feet of vacant abandoned buildings can experience up to a seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, uh, decrease in property values. Again, that's kind of economics, you know, we want to protect, uh, residents' property values, again, it protects our property taxes, kind of goes hand in hand. Uh, there's another study, uh, properties located within communities with graffiti can lose up to fifteen percent of its value, that's from the National Association of Realtors. I think they also went on to say if it was profane, it could actually be up to twenty-five percent of the property value. Uh, again, it's covered, some of the responsibilities that code enforcement covers, uh, we do vehicle abatements, so these are typically on private properties where the PD would, would handle a lot of stuff that are on city streets. Uh, we have hoarding cases, marijuana grows, dangerous blighted buildings. Legal use and conversion of structures, uh, again, business licenses, graffiti, and then pretty much enforcement of all applicable law, that state, federal, municipal code, kind of cover the whole gambit. I'll go through, I have a lot of examples, so as we go along, I'll.
I just didn't know what illegal use and conversion of structures.
Right, so I'll get there, so I say a picture worth a thousand words, I brought a lot of pictures, so, and I'll try to run through them timely. Again, it's ve- vehicle abatement, uh, this is, and all, a lot of the stuff that's in here is mostly within the last year, I try to keep as much current cases. Again, this was, uh, this property had, had a fire in it, uh, residents moved out, somebody moved a trailer onto the property. As you can see, it was, it was a pretty poor condition, actually had no plates, uh, wasn't even in the system anymore, it's, no tell when the last time it was even registered. Uh, so like, we were contacted by some neighbors, they're having some issues, people are stealing water, uh, there's other things going on. So we went out, uh, contacted the folks that were there, let them know that they could be living in an RV, because it's against our municipal code. They left, abandoned the vehicle, so we then followed up. Uh, we'll tag them for ten days, if we don't get a response, then we'll come out and tow the vehicle. And so you see, we work with the tow company, you can also see one of our fine law enforcement, uh, officers in the background there that assist, they help fill out some of the DMV forms and such. And away it goes. And you can see the after, it's a huge improvement for the neighborhood, uh, the neighbors were quite pleased. And this is a residence in the city, I was contacted about, uh, this is in the rear of the property. And you can see we have several vehicles, uh, we did wind up towing a few of them, including this gem here. Uh, again, this is another property, and you'd look at this and you'd think this is probably somewhere out in the county, you know. We're far corners down our county, but this is right in a residential neighborhood in our city. And they kind of ran the gambit on this one, they had, uh, banned, banned vehicles that be towed. Uh, I showed the picture of the boat, uh, boats in themselves can't be towed, but they're on trailers, they can be towed. Uh, again, trailers can be towed. Uh, I kind of throw this hoarding, and I kind of threw this picture in there, because sometimes you'll get indicators just from coming up to a property that there might be a problem. But sometimes you don't, you just, you never know, this one, there was a little bit of an indication that we came up on this one. This was a gentleman's kitchen. Uh, you see how high, uh, stuffed boxes were stacked in the property. This was actually by the bed, these are just, uh, food containers and bags and, uh, a lot of garbage. Restaurant facilities. This is what you can deal with. It's kind of be glad you, you're not the one that has to go out and deal with a lot of this stuff. Uh, indoor grows is our, continue to be a problem, especially in our current climate here in California.
Is this, uh, the same one that was just, that you showed us a couple of years ago?
No, we deal with many of these, this is very recent, actually. And you'll see as we go along, uh, each one of these, I think, is a thousand watt ballast that's plugged in. This case is a little interesting, if you look in the, the upper left-hand corner, you could see the, uh, the strip there with many, the cords going through the water and up into the plug-in. Again, you could see these are multiple strips plugged into these outlets. So each one of these, I believe this is a strip plugged into a, a strip. Again, you could see all the lights, everything that was in there, it was quite the operation. Now, the scary part is when you look and see, this was running the entire operation. So this is an old fuse panel. Basically, he would be blowing fuses left and right, as they would just blow, he'd just replace them, so they actually had a whole box full of fuses in the property. It was kind of amazing that it didn't catch on fire, but these are some of the problems that you deal with, people are unaware of. Uh, dangerous blighted buildings. Again, this is a multi-unit apartment complex, uh, we had several complaints about, and I, I believe, uh, Chief Black also had contacted me about this one. And this was a good example of some, uh, cooperation from a lot of different departments, we had, uh, a lot of different folks that came out on this. And you see the broken window with the packing tape, which is nice, and you have lots of children, uh, in this complex. This example of one of the apartments, this, uh, person did have a child living with them. I don't know if anybody can guess what this is? This is open cesspool, this is in, uh, this person's hallway. And it just had a, uh, piece of plywood covering it. Again, the outside exterior of the building, so this is where everybody gets to see as they're going by, and again, there's also is the weatherproofing of the structures. When you talk about mold issues and things like that, that's, you know, what this word's coming from. Again, here's a broken window, you can actually see the big chunk of windows missing, so anybody happened to stick their hand in there, nasty cut. Uh, again, this is stuff that was just out, visible from the street there, you could see, they had multiple mattresses and shopping carts, excuse me, other furniture throughout the apartment complex and things outside. So I could throw this, throw this in there, I will let you know, the, the, the one apartment with the cesspool, that person was relocated that day. And we ordered immediate removal, um, and then of course, immediate fixing of the property. And I go, showing example here, they started doing the reciting, uh, this is some primer going on. And we got the painting contractor in, this property's since actually been sold to, under new ownership. And this is an after picture, so you can kind of see the, the benefits here. Illegal conversions, so I think you're asking about this, uh, and this is another one, this, this is actually a case that's ongoing still. A lot of these wind up in, uh, our court system, so I can't go into too much detail. But this was uncovered, it, it started as a code enforcement issue, became a law enforcement issue, and it kind of came back as a code enforcement issue, we kind of delved into it. But you can see if they did, they, they constructed a, a building, another room inside the garage, which actually became, uh, a bedroom. So that's a legal conversion of the garage, they're now using it as, as a living facility. Again, enforcement, we would go back.
So is that against the law or do they just need a permit?
No, that's against the law, it's against the building code, you have to have certain standards for, for living quarters, you can't just build a plywood room with an extension cord and call it a bedroom. There's, uh, ventilation, heating issues, windows, lighting, I mean, it was ongoing.
The other thing is you're eliminating the parking from the neighborhood, you're enforcing everything to the exterior.
That's true, we do, we do require for residents, you have, uh, two covered off-street parking spaces in our zoning code, so it all goes back, again, it's a mult- multitude of, uh. Enforcing building codes, state laws, our municipal code, it just goes on.
What did you say we require, two off, what?
Two, uh, for residential, single-family residential units, in our zoning code, we require two covered off-street parking spaces.
Covered off-street?
Correct, so you can't, they have to be in a garage, basically, they have to be covered and off-street. On-street would be you're parking on the street, off-street is you're not parking on the street, you're parking on your property.
I think we're all breaking the law. I, I don't understand that rule.
It's in the zoning code, we require that, so, so residential units aren't overrun with, you know, off, parking issues. That's why we have garages and covered.
Yeah, the idea in zoning codes is to provide, you know, even getting the cars off the street and providing cover for them, you know, so. You know, all codes that I've ever worked with require two off-street, you know, covered, uh, stalls, you know, for units, and it could be a carport, you know, typically it's a garage. When you pack your garage with other stuff besides vehicles, yeah, technically, um, you know, it's, you know, the garages are designed and built for, you know, parking your car. Uh, most homes have the, you know, driveway pad, uh, or apron to, to park in, uh, but the idea is to get the cars off the street.
And, you know, we look at the zones, it also guides new construction, I mean, I think of it that way, too. Uh, vacant abandoned buildings, uh, this is an interesting, uh, Brookings Institute found that sixty cities, and they looked at cities such as Detroit. A lot of places that were really hard-hit in this economic downturn, with populations over one thousand residents, there was an average of two vacant buildings for every one thousand residents. You can kind of do some comparison with statistics, so I ran around, probably in about fifteen minutes, and I'm gonna have a series of slides of some buildings around our area. And I also wanted, just to hit home, it, it, you can come complacent, you know, when you live in a place, you drive by somewhere, that's a problem, and you always get used to it, but, uh. You know, I hate to say it, we need to face it, we have some issues in, in our community we need to deal with. Here's one that we will be dealing with, but you know, this is, for years, this is one-on-one frontage, as people are passing through our town, this is what they're seeing, you know, what, how do other people see us when they come through our community? Again, this is. Uh, we'll deal with all these properties, I mean, everything will be dealt with. You know, these are just kind of the, the. So, I do this one in there, and this gives you the, the importance, so that was about eight or nine buildings, so statistically, we're right up there. And that's, like I said, that's just running around in a few minutes, taking those photographs. And this, again, this will come at the end, we'll talk about maybe some new programs we might want to institute. Uh, if we don't follow up on these, uh, this is what can happen, and obviously, this was a, a structure here in our community that, uh, had some catastrophic failure. And unfortunately, fortunately, nobody was injured in this. You know, and again, we, we can't be everywhere, and so, you know, we don't have the right to enter everywhere. And if people don't tell us what's going on, a lot of times, we just don't know what's going on. And that's what it looks like now, you see all this shoring up in the giant hole. Housing stock, uh, pretty, our, our community is fairly well-built out, uh, for our housing stocks, it's, it's getting older. So, uh, I'd say on average, you know, a lot of our homes are fifty years, and many of them are older than fifty years, so. Have experienced deferred maintenance, a lot of the houses in our community are rentals, you know, so you get. A lot of times, houses aren't kept up the way they should be, and again, that comes back to, you know, protecting other people's property values, protecting our housing stock. Uh, again, protecting real estate values. And here's a good example, this is a vacant structure, and I've had many complaints, and we're, we're dealing with this. And, and at the end, I show a few slides of some stuff that we have dealt with in a, a certain way. And we've also talked, uh, with the Turdy Black, uh, CEO manager and myself, about receiverships. And this one's a good example, and not all receiverships should end in demolition of buildings. A really a good alternative, probably preferred method, is to put a pro, a building in receivership, rehabilitate that property and then resell that property, so it's still a viable property. And the other problem is, on the other end, we, you have vacant parcels, you still have to deal with vacant parcels. Again, this is a multi-unit, uh, property. And you can see, folks were inhabiting this structure, that's a broken window. Uh, this is actually a back balcony that's pretty much falling apart, and I'm kind of amazed that it hasn't fallen off at this point. Another issue, we're talking about environmental health issues, and, you know, a lot of times our city code enforcement officer kind of acts as environmental health also, so we deal with, uh, things like this. This is in the middle of the day, actually, and if you see all the little spotting on the wall, that's, uh, you know, insect droppings. Again, you can look at the, the siding on this structure, it's, uh, it's failed. Actually, all the siding on this property is pretty much failed, and I don't understand why they put the lap siding, anything's coming down and it's still running behind. Uh, this is a big issue, and Steve can address this, we've got a lot of these places that, uh, don't have smoke detectors. And it's a big problem, and this is commercial and residential structures, they're all required by law to have smoke detectors, and a lot of these units don't. You know, a lot, that is our responsibility, is try to protect renters and other folks that are having these structures.
Hey, Eric, how long has it been, uh, it seems like, hmm, in the last ten years? Uh, the fire department gave out smoke detectors.
Yeah, and I, I couldn't answer that, I'd have to.
Is there, I think, was a grant, was there a grant we got, or?
Yeah, we've got a couple of them, I think, we still have some, we.
Can you come up here, Chief, so that we can get this on the record?
If, if we like respond to a house, whether it's a fire or a medical emergency, and there's kids there and there's no smoke detectors, we'll hang one, we'll put one up for them. The problem is, the ones that we have are battery and they, as soon as we leave, they take the battery and put it in their Game Boy and it doesn't work anymore, so. But yeah, we still have some of those ones, Home Depot gave us some, most recently, and Walmart gave us a bunch before that. But if somebody needs one, we'll find one for them somewhere.
Okay.
But i- in most of these instances, though, it, it is the responsibility of the landlord to provide this type of.
I know, but I think there's a lot of.
Sure, oh, I agree, I agree, but I'm just.
Not, you know, and I, I think, you know, there might be some low-income people that would appreciate, you know, having access to one, so maybe letting somehow, you know, outreach. In the newsletter that we don't do. Just teasing. Letting people know that they're available.
And some of our commercial directors is in one of our hotels here in town. Uh, this was one of the rooms, again, we had, uh, pretty good task, code for the task force we put together and went out and dealt with this. And actually, in this one, we also included, uh, the probation department, uh, they had some folks that they wanted to talk to. I can see the faulty wiring. Again, siding on this complete, this entire structure is, it's failed. Work without a permit and exposed wires. Again, broken windows. These are all rooms for rent. Uh, this one week was kind of a mystery, we couldn't figure out where this water was coming from, so it was coming from out of one of the rooms, but it was coming from under the wall of the structure, so we weren't exactly sure where it was coming from. Where do we go from here? And that's kind of why I, I kind of pick and choose some of the highlights. Kind of give you a good idea of what's going on out there. Again, one of the programs that some other jurisdictions have is a residential rental housing inspection program. Uh, anybody has a rental, whether it be a single-family or multi-units, required to sign up as a rental. Uh, they pay a nominal fee, I think it's twenty-eight dollars a year. We go and you conduct the inspections, uh, if, if they're good for a couple of years, then you, you, you either reduce or you get rid of the fee. Uh, there's also self-certification programs where we don't have to go in there and do the inspection, they can fill out the form themselves. Uh, but it's a good way of really checking up on a lot of these and ensuring that they're, they're kept up. Again, we can't be everywhere, uh, we're very understaffed, I'll say for code enforcement, I would easily have a full-time position for code enforcement in the city. Uh, again, another one's maintenance rehabilitation of vacant and neglected buildings. I know the city of Sacramento has this program, even if you have, if a building's vacant for, I think, a hundred and eighty consecutive days, they will actually tag it as a, uh. As a, um, substandard building, basically, or a public nuisance, and so they have ways of. Kind of making sure these properties at that point are inspected and kept up. You know, that, that's a problem, a lot of times, when you have these type of properties, you're losing out, again, it's in the report, but you lose out, uh, lower property values, lowers other people's property values. Obviously, you don't get the, the full, uh, taxation on the property. And then you also don't get the, people wanting to come in and invest in our community, you know, you gotta think about, are you trying to attract new businesses and other folks to come locate to our community? A cost recovery program, we've already initiated the, uh, administrative citations, which is, which is a good tool, there's other things, a lot of communities, as soon as they have any type of violation, they'll, uh, record it against the property. Technically, term they call it clouding the property, or clouding the title, uh, and then they charge a fee to have it removed. So there, there's other ways and means out there, I'm just throwing some of these out, so if, uh, these are some things we want to follow up on, staff will certainly follow up and. You know, get a more comprehensive, detailed report on some of these programs. And again, uh, we throw in there at the mid-year budget, evaluate the cost benefit of an in-house building inspector, uh, maybe get a little more manpower for the code enforcement and, and building inspection for our community. A lot of times, they can go hand in hand. And I threw this in there, progress, so, I threw a couple of these in here. Uh, again, this is one of the properties we just recently dealt with. Uh, this has been abandoned for several years, and this is one I, I don't believe real, rehabilitation probably was really, would work. Again, so it became some good training for our fire department. And that's after, and it's actually, rubble's been cleared off the property at this point, too, so a little bit of an improvement.
And part of that, you know, that I think building needed to come down and it really helped the neighborhood, but now we have a vacant lot. And I'd share with you, I drove by there this morning and, you know, there's a pile of garbage in the middle of the lot that, you know, now Eric needs to go out and try and, and, you know, clean it up and get it abated, and so even vacant lots in our community, you know, start having, you know, some significant, you know, concerns as they remain vacant.
Yeah, it's a vicious cycle. Almost those types of things completely cleaning up a property. Again, I just threw in the, everybody remembers this one, Stilldale Patio. And I, just back for a second on this one, too, this goes back kind of that broken window theory. I know when we went into this property, too, there was a lot of empty, and Steve witnessed this, there were some empty liquor containers and liquor bottles and tell folks had been hanging out and having the property. And you imagine, that's your home, you know, or you live, that's your neighborhood. And again, this is one of our larger problems in the community for many years. Again, this was a pretty successful training. And that's what it looks like today, and hopefully, unfortunately, the end of redevelopment kind of put a monkey wrench, but hopefully, we'll be able to attract some new development and have a more attractive, more viable business or housing at that location. That's it, thank you. I'll answer any questions if there's any at this time.
Thank you, Eric, that was a really excellent and thorough presentation. Do we have comments or clarification or comments from council members?
I do. On the solution end of it, on the residential inspection program, can that also be implemented for commercial buildings?
You know, that's something we have to look into, I mean, it's a good idea, I think we should have something like that.
Yeah, because a lot of the complaints that we get are about certain businesses and the city limits that are empty.
Sure, well, if we get complaints, and that's again, goes out to, hey, let us know, if there's a problem, let us know, and that gives us enough reason. If it's a public, if it's a business, we have every right just to go in there like everybody else does and take a look and see what's going on. Or if need be, if we go and we get stonewalled, a lot, we've done it, we'll go out and get inspection warrants. So we'll follow up on that, so there's different ways of dealing with the problems.
And then I just wanted to just ask you how much cooperation we have with Dave Mason and the solid waste code enforcement county, city. Is that working for us, is there any cooperation, are we working with them hand in hand?
I wouldn't say we're working hand in hand. And I guess it's one of the issues we have, and that's something that we need to look at, we don't enforce their ordinance at this time. I believe we have maybe a paper copy of the ordinance, I'm not even sure where to find the ordinance, to be honest with you. I'm sure Mr. Mason, you'd have to ask him that question on how many cases or what he handles, I don't get any feedback.
Didn't you and Mr. Palazzo and Mary Wilson just go over all those ordinances?
We've looked at the ordinances, but we don't, as an institution, as a city, we don't enforce their ordinance. Mr. Mason, that's his job, you know, I don't, I've requested in the past that maybe we would receive maybe a list of properties so we don't, aren't going over them twice. That had that issue, where I've gone out and gone, yeah, I just received this letter, I said, why didn't I send you a letter, I'm here now.
Has that happened?
It has not at this point, but I'm not sure, you know, what's going on on their end, too, so I, that's something that...
Maybe meeting with...
But Mr. Mason has been very helpful to us as a city, though. Anytime I have a question, or he's provided us with a lot of materials. So on that end, I would say, yes, he's very, very helpful.
Is there any progress on moving forward with that conversation with Mary Wilson and the task force and what the overlapping of the ordinances and...
Yeah, the progress on that, I actually had a discussion with Mr. Black and Martha about, you know, taking our, taking a look at our ordinances and bringing them more to consistency with each other. You know, I think which would help. And then I think just the communication in between our code enforcement departments, between the city and the county, and so we don't overlap, you know, those, you know, basically sending a letter to the same property owner.
Right.
I think the, looking at consistency would be beneficial, you know, for us and kind of define each role.
Maybe there's some kind of a software database program that the code enforcement officers could equally access so that you had this, all, you know, the same information. I don't know, it just came to my mind, but I was one of the council members that asked for this presentation tonight, and it kind of stemmed from our supercommittee with the task force and kind of a lack of communication and how that was moving forward and with the solid waste management authority. So that'd be really good for this council to have a really clear understanding of all the work that Eric does, but how it, how it, how we can cooperate with the county and solid waste so that we're not overlapping and, you know, spending time on things simultaneously. And then also, I think, understanding that information better will help this council decide, when we do our budget review, how we want to move forward with that.
Yeah, and I think the big picture is that, you know, the solid waste in the county, you know, addresses refuse garbage on properties. You know, Mr. Taylor's is addressing so much more. You know, it's that abandoned shopping cart to the graffiti, to, you know, code violations, to, you know, abandoned buildings that, you know, need to either, you know, be removed or fixed up. So, you know, our scope within our municipal code is a lot greater than what the solid waste scope is with just addressing, you know, the, you know, refuse of the garbage that are on properties. We get some of that, I made a comment, you know, on Eighth Street, you know, we have a pile of garbage sitting on the vacant lot, but I don't think we get a whole lot of that within, you know, our city.
I would add also, and I, you see what we deal with, and I'm sure Mr. Mason has his hands full with the, you know, he does the entire county, so I'm not sure...
Yeah, and I know he deals with a lot more than just garbage.
Right, but I'm just saying, I don't know how much, how much of his time to solid waste is spent in the city.
Right, and I, that's, yeah, the million dollar question, is how we can cooperate.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, the, I think the solid waste is a resource, because if I, I don't know what the current budget calls for, but the year, the previous year, solid waste was spending, or allocated thirty thousand dollars to do material-related cleanups conducted by Mr. Mason, and that is intended to be partially spent in the city.
Yes.
So it's a resource, like, the one slide that Eric showed that had all the hulks of cars, numerous hulks of cars and other trash in somebody's backyard, that would have been one where perhaps Mr. Mason could have been called in.
Right, because they have the, they have the vehicle, abandoned vehicle authority as well that we sit as board members under.
We operate under that same program, so, I mean, the county or solid waste or us, we operate, it's a state program, we operate under that same program.
Yeah, I think the budget this year is twenty-ish, twenty-ish. Yeah, but I know that when, before it became a supercommittee, we did an abatement of a property that was, looked much like that, but about ten times worse through the solid waste, and that was paid for through those funds.
But Eric did bring up one topic that I think is worthy of your further consideration, and that has to do with receiverships. And Eric raises an interesting point, because we've done two receiverships as the city. One of which I would consider an unadulterated success, and the other one I would consider to be only a partial success. And both of those had to do with commercial properties, both of those had to do with the demolition and removal of the buildings involved. And what Eric raised was the possibility that we would look at receivership as a solution to structures, not necessarily commercial, but perhaps even more likely residential structures. We would put them into receivership, the receiver would access the equity in the property, even encumbered equity. In other words, equity that is essentially used up by a bank lien. The receiver can access that equity and basically force the bank off the property and use the equity in the property to rehabilitate that structure and basically flip it as a residence. So we would then, essentially, if we, if we had front money going in, we could recover that front money very quickly by rehabilitating a property and selling it at market and recover our initial capital and go on to the next house. One of the things that I'm, one of the things that I'm very interested in, based on our one experience of mixed results, is doing, bringing the receivers closer to home and basically doing the receiverships in-house and finding a local party instead of somebody from, basically from Laguna Beach, was the last receiver that we had. And even for him to come up here was a major effort and a major expense. I think we can find people local that can be appointed by the court, that have stature in the community and are basically bondable, you know, people that, that can then put these projects out to bid, get a contractor in there, use the financing that is available, hopefully on the front end to rehabilitate a unit, put it on the market, sell it, and move on to the next one.
How do you handle that in such a down market, though? I know we talked about like the every two buildings that are vacant for every thousand people and tagging them, and it sounds great, but in such a bad economy, it's hard to make that actually come to fruition.
I think you have to be, you have to be very cautious about how much money you put into the property, and you have to really assess the property through a series of critical inspections before you actually enter into the receivership. So you don't want to go into a receivership on a property that may at best, once you've fixed up that structure, you might be able to sell it for, say, ninety-five thousand. If it's going to cost you significantly more than that to get the receiver appointed, to get the financing, to hire the contractors, if you're going to be a hundred and fifteen thousand into it, maybe that's not a good target for you, because you're going to lose twenty thousand on the, on the operation. If the city was flush, or if we had a big grant for doing urban cleanup, maybe spending, spending out twenty thousand to have a fixed up, you know, home and bring the whole neighborhood up might make sense. If we're working with limited resources, you have to go in and spend seventy-five thousand and be able to sell it for ninety-five. But anyway, I think, I think all of that can be done if it's approached carefully and not, and don't give the receiver a blank check, as happened in one of our properties.
You know, wasn't, years ago, wasn't the Larry's Old Secondhand Store, wasn't that taken through receivership?
That was a receivership right there across from Home Depot. And that one, I would say, was very successful, although we still don't see any new activity on the property, but it's there, it's available, it's a sizable chunk of commercial property, so there's reason to hope that we will see something.
I've seen blankets sold there.
I guess that's commercial activity.
So is there any other comments from other council members before I open this up for public comment?
I'd just like to comment that three of us here have been walking the neighborhoods for a couple of months, and it was alarming for me. I really hadn't taken that close a look until the campaign, and it got my attention, and I appreciate these ideas, and I'd like to pursue them further.
I just have a quick comment, I agree, and, you know, especially when we have people that want to improve their property and you have to look across the street at something that's a nice, or, for example, Rural Human Services is purchasing that old Mac to Marion Peep building, and they're spending a lot of money to purchase it, and you look across the street and there's an abandoned Kentucky Fried Chicken building that they've done nothing to. If we had an ordinance in place right now, we could do exactly what Mr. Taylor said, after it's a neglected building. If we had that ordinance in place, we can do something with that building. That's a perfect example, in fact, that's the only one I've seen on L Street or M Street that is in that condition. I think everything is occupied, other than that.
The Ralaberto's Taco Shop is in, the old Carl's Jr. Building, that's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, it needs to be fixed up, but that's still open, right?
Correct, and a lot of these problems have stemmed from kind of this, you know, all the downturn in the market and all the foreclosures. And unfortunately, legislature actually has just extended, there's one ordinance, if they're foreclosed properties, that we can actually go in, I think fines are, can be up to a thousand dollars a day if their property is acquired by foreclosure and they're not being maintained, so someone else will...
But, you know, we can put an ordinance in place that vacant buildings have to be closed properly, like other cities have. They have to cover their signs, they have to respond to broken windows, that has to be maintained, exactly.
And, you know, like I said, I just threw out there just to kind of show the comparison on the statistics, but we have quite a few vacant buildings, a lot more than what's been presented tonight.
That just made me think, what about talking to the Board of Realtors about a local, you know, kind of cooperative agreement between the Realtors and, and some kind of agreement in the listings that they sign contracts for, to have something in place that, you know, makes somebody responsible for keeping the grass mowed at least, or, you know, while an agent has the listing, maybe for an out-of-town owner. Just a thought.
One of my, one of the people that I talk with, which is Mayor Potem's, and he is neighbor, is the Langendorfs. And they made the suggestion that the Realtors maintain the properties if they're trying to sell them, because there's some pretty unattractive properties for sale with real estate signs on them.
Making it a requirement that they keep it up, that's a good idea.
It seems to me like it would benefit them, they might be able to move the properties a little easier, but, you know, that's something that we can consider. Anything else from...
And this effort would extend to, say, office space in downtown, commercial building, I mean, there's some of those offices that have stayed vacant for a very long time, and I think that's impacted the recovery of our downtown businesses.
Well, they're not rented, though, because they're in such bad shape.
So it's a vicious circle, so we...
Maybe that's something for us to step into.
And, you know, I can jump in, and then the key with the commercial buildings is, you know, have an ordinance in place so we can inspect them to make sure they are being kept up in a good manner. And so when, you know, somebody does come in and want to rent it, you know, it's there and available, and there's not a lot of upkeep. And just the safety issues, you know, making sure that it does have, you know, not have broken windows, it's not getting, you know, mold and mildew inside there because it's vacant and the heat's not on. So there's a lot of, you know, different issues that we could address with the vacant, you know, commercial buildings in our community.
Right, and we can spin that in a more positive way with that certification, building owners can bring in more affluent renters and also commercial businesses.
Eric, when someone gets a business license for a business in the city, does that give us the right to inspect?
It does. Again, it comes down to manpower, to be able to get to everyone and inspect them.
Sure.
And we did have a pretty, while we had the in-house building inspector, you know, we were very, and Steve and myself, we still do, do these. But some of that slipped through the cracks, I think, you know, and obviously, that's not a service that the county's going to provide for us.
Right, I was just curious.
Okay, with that, I will open it up for public comment, is there any other, is there any public comment on this agendized item? Okay, seen none, I will bring it back to the council, I just want to make a challenge to property owners, both residential and commercial, to take a little pride in our city and clean up our city one building at a time, and we can all have a better economic engine here if we do that, so... This is just a report, which, as I said, was very thorough, and it's given us a lot of food for thought on how we want to move forward in addressing these issues, and thank you, Eric, for that.
Well, I'd like to say that I'd like to see the detail... Well, I'd like to say that I'd like to see the details in those suggestions that you made.
At a future meeting. I think that the whole council is in consensus.
We'll bring some stuff back, you know, in the new year, you know, get through the next few months, you know, put some stuff together for you.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. We have on our next item to select a new mayor, Mayor Protem, but before that, I, as your outgoing mayor, I wanted to thank the community and my fellow council members for the honor bestowed upon me and highlight some of the projects that we have achieved together. Starting off with the Christmas celebration last year with Santa landing in a helicopter and dazzling kids of all ages and thanks to the Business Improvement District efforts. We had Mayor Pro, former Mayor Charles Slurk unexpectedly resigned this year and brought us Rick Hawley in an appointment to the City Council. The city became more involved with the California League of Cities Redwood Empire Division. I was appointed to the Legislative Committee. Richard Ania continued his appointment to the Public Safety Committee. And we attended the quarterly conferences in Lakeport-Urika and hosted the meeting here in July, offering us opportunity to showcase the city with tours of the area and facilities, in addition to becoming involved with the Coastal Cities Group in an effort to work in a more homogeneous nature with the California Coastal Commission and the amendments to our local coastal plan. All of these efforts brought us greater exposure for the city at the state level. We had the public-private partnership. We filmed with and launched a media campaign in Today of America. We had massive efforts in the recovery from the March 2011 tsunami and we saw the city using our ten thousand dollars that received from the We Hear You America Award go towards materials, while the grant administered through Rural Human Services supplied the labor with city staff training and supervising those displaced. We also had the Front Street and Beachfront Master Plan redesign workshops resulting in a completed master plan for Front Street, making us eligible for future funding, and our Beachfront Parks Master Plan is nearing completion. We removed the tsunami landing, it was a safety hazard and made the down, area of downtown much more attractive to foot traffic, and the fountain became a nice focal point once again. We also garnered funding for the Fire Hall retrofit and the funding to improve infrastructure at the Shoreline RV Park, which generates more revenue as enterprise fund to the city. And we adopted our strategic plan, which realized our budget and future coming into an alignment, hope helping us to set priorities and stay on track, and we became more proactive thanks to the strategic plan. The city launched an attendance recognition in order to complement Delnort County Unified School District's strategic plan to improve attendance with our students. We held graduation and recognition ceremonies to recognize the value and efforts of our volunteer firefighters and explorers. And in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and sponsorships, we held a record-breaking Fourth of July and Sea Cruise events and finally established a film Delnort in order to bring more revenue to the community. Our Small Business Development Center graduated over thirty small businesses in their flight programs through city-funded CDBG grants. We saw an increase in the number of art walks, which support local artists. And our last meeting, at our last meeting, our Public Works Department highlighted the numerous achievements they have accomplished and we are most fortunate to have such a hard working team. In addition, we have the strongest, most talented and dedicated city staff in the country, and without them, none of the above could have been accomplished, and I thank you. Lastly, we had an exciting campaign and elections both here locally and at the state and federal levels, and I thank my fellow candidates for running a clean campaign to our citizens for taking an active role in this process. As I said, it's truly been an honor to serve as your mayor and council member, and I look forward to the next few years, four years. And with that, we will move on to item number thirteen, which is to select a new mayor and Mayor Protem for 2012, 2013 in accordance with City Resolution 1991-10. So do we have nominations for mayor?
I would nominate Richard Ania for mayor and Rick Hawley for Mayor Protem.
I second that.
And before we take a vote, I would just like to say that, sitting up here next to you, I understand how much time and effort it takes to be the mayor of this city and how much pride that is instilled in a mayor of the city of Crescent City. And I just wanted to thank you for your time and I know that over the next couple of months you'll be running the meeting like I did when you started, but you did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. It's been an honor. Do we have any other nominations? Good. Seeing none, could you please pull the vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, with pleasure. And congratulations to our new mayor, Richard Ania, and our Mayor Protem, Rick Hawley. I know you'll do a great job. With that, I'll pass the gavel.
Mayor Murray did a lot of stuff, just like Kelly said, this time. I hope I can do half that. And we're really moving forward with our city and we have a council to do that, and I just had a couple of things prepared here. We're on track with our budget, which is, which I think is fantastic. And we'll be getting a budget, a mid-year budget in a month or two. We've had a big turnover in staff this last year, mostly due to retirements, but we've gone through significant restructuring. And just like you said, Mayor Murray, this is an excellent crew to work with, the employees. And we should continue based on our priorities and our budget. Now, we're going to go over the, we'll be following our strategic plan and we're going to have a workshop, I think, coming up pretty soon to go over our strategic plan again to see if we want to make any changes to it or continue it as we're doing for our priorities for next year. And there's a lot of projects going. We're hoping for grant dollars for, one of them is very important, is the Second Street Sewer Project, the Fire Hall retrofit project we're doing, the Beachfront Master Plan Project, and the RV Park redesign. And these are, these are our projects and balancing the budgets are a big priority for us. And of course, we're going to have to figure out what our next evolution of economic development is going to be, because that's really important in our community and we're going to have to start thinking about that. And also, this coming year, we're going to have to evaluate our water and sewer rates to see how we're doing with them, because I know we have some maintenance projects that we have to get done. And we want to make sure that we have the money to do that and not defer everything and get into trouble with that. We talked about code enforcement. Expanding code enforcement may be a good, a good idea to do. And partnerships, I thought of one partnership, the high school or the school district has been in touch, and they called me today, and they wanted, they're going, they applied for a grant to continue the Delnort Warriors overtime program, which is an enrichment program. So they're applying for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to continue that program for our children. And with your permission, I'll send them a letter going for the, to keep, to apply for the grant, when they're applying for it, to keep that grant coming, if that's okay with the council. So we do have partnerships and we're going to have a lot more partnerships. And I'm looking forward to a good year with all of your help. I'm looking forward to an excellent year. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, with that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, before you, are you going into closed session?
Yes.
There's an item of potential litigation that has arisen quite recently. We just identified it in some staff discussions earlier today. So if we could simply, on the closed session agenda, increase the potential litigation discussion from two cases to three cases?
We can do that.
I'd appreciate that. And that does not require a vote. It just requires an announcement.
Before we go into that, we have city council items. Is there any legislative matters that you wanted to bring up, Mr. Palazzo?
I sent the council a packet from the League of Cities on the webinar that Mayor Murray and I attended and sat in on, so you have that, that's, you know, the latest update.
Okay. Do you have any reports or council? How about the council? Is there any concerns, referrals you want to bring up? Or reports? Yes.
I can just say that I attended some meetings, as we always do. Transportation Commission, we attended that meeting, Senior Center had a board meeting and we had a special meeting in the tri-agency dealing with some of those issues that we all know about.
Can you give us an update?
On, on?
I'm interested, I actually had on my list to ask for an update on tri-agency from your meeting. And then also, the Senior Center, I'd like to know what's going on there, too.
Okay. The, as you know, the tri-agency has, is, is without Mr. Benfro at this point. He has left.
Yeah. Let me kind of jump in there. The tri-agency was a closed session.
It was a closed session.
That's one of the closed sessions.
It was a closed session.
So at this point, I wouldn't recommend discussing that.
Okay. Talk to us about the Senior Center.
The Senior Center is pleased to have the CDBG funds. We have adjusted the budget accordingly with the CDBG funds. The Senior Center continues to have, as with the city, we have legal concerns that we're dealing with on an ongoing basis and I'm not free to share any of that with you today, but we are dealing with it in a responsible way and.
You're just on some controversial committees, aren't you? Thanks for nothing, Rick.
Kelly, what do you have?
Yeah. Crossed tri-agency off my list. I attended the grand opening of Walmart, the newly expanded Walmart. It was really, it was kind of a cool grand opening because there were so many different groups of people that were involved in making it come to, you know, to be successful and, you know, the stage band from the high school played and Chair of the Supervisors Sullivan spoke and our mayor was there. I think the coolest thing about Walmart now is that it has Java Hut. I think it's really cool that Walmart, you know, is doing business with a local business. I just, I respect that a lot. I attended the chamber mixer for Laura Wiens at her high ground art studio, which was very cool. And I also, with Mr. Gastineau, this afternoon at five o'clock, attended the Delnort High School Business Lab Chamber Mixer and kind of grand opening. Very cool. There's probably about, Ron, I'll let Ron tell you about it because I think he was involved in making it happen. But for the first time in like twenty years, we're offering business classes to our high school students again. So there's a, we have a new teacher that came all the way from Minnesota, love his accent, Mr. Arnell, and he is teaching Microsoft Office and Excel and PowerPoint and multimedia to the kids. So just very, very exciting as they move forward in teaching the kids more. What's the, the whole, the whole group where she listed all of the different, like?
Tracks.
Different tracks? Anyway, so that was pretty cool. I attended the Veterans Dinner. That was also an amazing event. And we have, the guest speaker for the night was, I don't recall his actual title, but he flew for like three different presidents and, you know, served in the war and this amazing accomplished man that lives right here in our community. So I really enjoyed attending that. I attended the Explorers Award Ceremony and I can never say enough about those kids. I just think they're, they could be like the, you know, eighth wonder of Crescent City, I think. And thank you to Robin because she's a big part of that program. Oh, I wanted to ask a real quick question. Do we have any update on our planning commissioners' vacancies?
Good announcement, actually. I'd like to, we have two vacancies that are open, one to fill Mr. Councilmember Gastineau's position, and then we had one resignation. We'll be advertising that and, you know, hopefully, you know, get some applicants that are interested in being on the commission will take that through that process. It eventually has to come back to the City Council for.
And actually, I know a couple of applicants that are going to apply.
Great.
Good. And lastly, I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and if you're traveling, to travel safely. And I'm excited because my dad's coming down to spend the day with me and that hasn't happened for a while. So it's just a time to reflect and spend time with family and I'm really looking forward to it, so.
Mr. Gastineau?
Yeah. Attending the last couple of meetings and listening you guys give your reports, I decided I'd start saying what I do around here. I attended the Transitional Age Youth Meeting at Coastal Connections, which is a teen center down on K Street, working with youth there. We have been doing a lot of building of trying to get the youth and young adult voice out into the community, a lot of advocacy there. I also attended the meth forum at the high school and that was very interesting and it's really interesting to see from a firsthand basis, most of these people, how they came out of that tragic drug addiction. And then, of course, I was at the Walmart grand opening with Ms. Shalong and other council members. And then, of course, like we mentioned, last Thursday was my last planning commission and Eric told me that I had to find a replacement for myself and so I talked to a friend and hopefully he's going to apply.
You found a friend?
I have a friend. Who knows a friend who wants to be on the planning commission?
You have a lot more as this time goes forward.
Yes. So that's the extent of my meeting.
Good. Okay. Councilmember Murray?
Well, we had the election right after our last city council meeting, so once again, thanks for everyone for turning out and voting. I attended the farewell party for Gina Zatola from the Chamber of Commerce. I think Councilmember Shalong was there and it was a bittersweet farewell, but she'll do.
And the mayor gave a very nice speech, which was put into, yeah. Mayor Murray gave a very nice speech, which was followed up with, as a letter to the editor. So it was very nice.
Thank you. And then we had the Veterans Day Parade and Dinner. I hope we see a lot more people out for the parade next year, but the dinner was very well-attended and we had a very interested, interesting guest speaker and we had the Explorers serving us, which they did a terrific job. Then we had the Explorers Recognition Ceremony and I, once again, I want to just emphasize how impressed I am with their vision for our community and their leadership skills that they're demonstrating at such a young age, and particularly their code of ethics.
We should have had them do it tonight.
Well, we didn't know that they were going to be here, so maybe they can come back and recite that for us. I mean, I think it's something for us to aspire to as a council, their code of ethics. Mr. Palazzo and I participated in the California League of Cities webinar and then I, too, was there for the Walmart expansion and we had, like Councilmember Shalong mentioned, a lot of different entities represented. The Delnort High School Band is amazing and I don't remember the name of the two guys that sang the Star Spangled Banner, but that was, that's a hard song to sing.
It was Scott Perry and.
They did an excellent job.
Mr. Russell.
And we also had both clubs from Rotary there. We had our Oversight Committee for Redevelopment where no action was taken and Mr. Palazzo reported that out. And then I had an unexpected honor to be a speaker at the Hmong New Year Celebration this year, and it was such an amazing event. The celebration, I learned a lot more about the traditions of the Hmong people and grew to appreciate the exquisite costumes that they wear, all the work is done, the beading and all the sewing by the Hmong women, and it was, it was really an honor to be there. And I just wanted to put a plug in for the teacher at Crescent Elk, Pa Zong. She's raising money to take the Crescent Elk students, Hmong students, on tours of colleges. So if you have extra cash, you might want to send some money towards that endeavor. And I want to thank Ku Vang for his coordinating the event. It was just wonderful and I want to apologize, too, for missing their lunch. And we know we're looking for new planning commissioners. We think we have a couple lined up, so I hope you will step up and do the very much needed work that we have on the planning commission and support the city. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I attended the Airport Authority meeting and they're getting all the permits in line and they're. and they're even talking about maybe breaking ground this spring. And then the Port, I attended a Port Authority, it's a Port Authority and Safety Committee that I'm on and with a supervisor, and then there's another, a couple other people on there, several people, in fact, and we're trying to work towards something that I didn't, I didn't know we didn't have, was our Coast Guard, I thought it was a Coast Guard station. Turns out, the Coast Guard unit that's here is part of Eureka's, and they don't have to stay here, and so we're working towards getting a Coast Guard station, has a different word than station, so we'd have permanent Coast Guardsmen here and not just a stop here for their Humboldt stations. It's very difficult to do, so we're trying to work with the, with the Congress, because Congress has to appropriate it and approve it. Interesting-
The, it's, it's not a stopover for Humboldt, as far as I know, but what it is, is-
It's Group Humboldt Bay, and what it is, is they, they don't have barracks. We want a permanent barracks. They can be out in the community. We want a permanent station here.
Oh.
And they can be recalled at any time to Humboldt Bay, and we can be, I found out, six months out of the year, they're not here, which is true to me.
Well, because, because they're out in the sea, right?
Doing things, yeah, but if we had our own station, we'd have some people here. They wouldn't all be gone. And then, it's interesting to note that twenty miles away in the state of Oregon, Brookings has a station, and we don't, and so we're going to work, we're working on that, because it's Oregon, that's right. And I also attended the Explorer Award Ceremony, which was great.
And we should all probably welcome Mr. Gastineau.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome to the council.
Yes.
I guess we're stuck with Rick.
You know, I, speaking of that, Mr. Gastineau, I have, I have to tell you, I shared this with Kelly a minute ago, you were the top vote getter, and, you know, I was second, so now people have taken to calling me Avis, and so I just thought I, it's not a great nickname to have, so thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And with that, we're going to adjourn to a closed session, and our next council meeting is December third. Thank you for coming tonight.